All right, welcome everybody. The study session of July twenty six, twenty twenty two is called to order. Carrie, will you roll call please?
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowe. Watson. Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell. Watson. And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Carrie. Tonight, we're discussing park funding strategies, community development. Mark Ziegler has the presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm excited to be here tonight and talk about our parks as a whole a little bit and what we're facing with maybe some oncoming development in our community, residential development specifically, our capital improvement program and how these our operations and these future projects have funded. We've been talking about this extensively with our Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Committee. I'll recognize Mel Schneider who's here tonight sits on the committee too, as well as the others that are helping us out with all our parks and recreation decisions as they prior to coming to the council. So I'll go ahead and get started now with the first slide here. There's all these.
Um, there's all these benefits for parks. Um, they improve physical and psychological health, strengthen communities, create attractive places. There's the intrinsic environmental aesthetic and recreation benefits, you know, forest lands, stormwater mitigation, habitat, things like that. There's also economic benefits. Property values are showing to increase proximity to parks or with communities that have strong park system. Uh, sales tax and tourism uh increase with parks and the kind of the ancillary businesses and activities that that take place around there. Um, there's a statistic here that over six billion dollars generate economic activity in Washington State due to park and recreational agency spending. Uh, so being at the kind of the foothills of the Olympic Peninsula and the Olympics and um Olympic National Park, Olympic National Forest, Hamahammer Recreation Area. Uh, we see it quite a bit of that, you know, moving through our community and going on passes. Some of them stay here, some of them don't, but um really we're focused on, you know, our residential community, our people that that live here and uh recreate here, work here and the needs that they have. Uh, they've been developed through our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. Um, that plan, I'll call it the post if you don't mind, Parks Recreation Space and Trails Plan, uh, just to save a few words here. Um, we, through that planning process, uh, we developed Parks and Recreation Standard. So we have an acreage standard, five acres per thousand residents. Uh, and that's been pretty consistent for like my time here, which is a little over twenty years um in in trying to achieve that goal of that five acre per thousand. We've also, I think, one of the really important standards, the half mile radius um per resident for a neighborhood park. Um, the intent is that somebody could walk to a neighborhood park after work, Saturday morning. Um, it's not a destination area, but somebody has access to those, one of those neighborhood parks. Um, within a half mile radius is a is a pretty reasonable standard that we've developed. Uh, through that post plan, we've uh, we had priority objectives that were developed and that was based on community feedback. You know, we had uh, community surveys, community meetings, we had our advisory committee and tried to gather as much information as possible. And it's funny, these haven't changed much in the last twelve years or so through these these uh post plans. First and foremost was planning this in safety. Um, that's what we heard back from the community. Uh, not too long after that, we hired us a a full-time maintenance worker that worked weekends and we didn't have that prior to twenty seventeen. Uh, so that that individual works uh four tens uh Friday through Monday. And provides us services on weekends so we can have clean facilities, open restrooms for our entire community year round. So we used to just supplement that with seasonal workers, but uh, you know, there's a time, there's time limitations, seasonal workers come and go, you can, um, they're a little less reliable, you know, especially working on their own. So it's nice to have that full-time employee that that's working uh weekends to provide that service for us. Uh, the other priorities for uh amenities are walking and biking trails. That's been consistent for a number of years and nature trails, fairly similar beach and shoreline areas. We have limited access to our waterfront around here, whether it's uh Goldsboro Creek, Oakland Bay. Um, there aren't really any lakes in the city of Shelton, but uh any water access and then neighborhood parks. Again, um, those are the kind of the top priors came out of our post plan. Some of the renovation and replacement needs uh included the replacement of the old park play structure. We're approaching right at twenty-five years lifespan on that thing. Um, the lifespan when it was originally constructed was around twenty years. Um, we've done a good job of maintaining that structure. We've had some app brass. We've had to alter, uh, remove or change, but for the most part, it's there, but it's not going to last forever. It's a wood structure in the Northwest, right? Uh, the skate park, again, a wood structure um out in the environment. Um, we're maintaining that the best we can with some partnerships in Mason County, but it's not going to last forever. And then uh Calan Park Parking, uh, it's a gravel parking lot, doesn't provide the best experience nor ADA um access. Um, so those are some of the kind of big ticket items that we identified through the post plan um needing to address in the future. And the the CIP, Capital Improvement Program lists out a lot more of these projects um throughout the duration of our our post plan. So we have kind of the five-year on the left-hand side, uh, the future projects on the right-hand side. Won't go through them all. There's a number of trails, uh, playgrounds, development of neighborhood parks. Um, but the five-year CIP is just over five million dollars if you call forty-five thousand dollars just over. So just over five million dollars and you'll look at the future projects, just about a million nine hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. That's what we're facing in our capital improvement program uh um as developed through the pro- program. So we we have some needs that are identified in the community. Uh, we have areas that we don't have that neighborhood park within a half-mile service radius, uh, like up on North Cliff. Uh, we've got the um uh Eagle Point Trail um development in here. We've got the Simpson Railroad um conversion to a multimodal trail. And a couple of these things have increased. Uh, with the Simpson Trail, we've been increased the the cost estimate on this recently because we applied for a grant, did a little bit more research on uh what it would take to construct that that project. So that that price tag jumped up too. So we're seeing construction cross costs increase, you know, annually as uh as these project projects kind of sit in the plan and don't get constructed. So our funding mechanism primarily is through Shelton Metropolitan Park District revenue. Metropolitan Park District was formed in twenty eleven by a vote of the people, um, showed our support in our community for our Parks and Recreation Services and we're grateful that that took place. We were at the, you know, right at the cusp or right in the middle of a, you know, a pretty severe recession there and we were facing um critical needs uh within the city uh that affected our general fund and being able to relieve the general fund of those parks and recreation um cer- you know, costs uh certainly helped out in some of those uh areas, but also formed dedicated funding uh perpetually. So it is a junior taxing district uh on property tax within the city limits. The rate is about sixty-four cents per thousand valuation right now. So four hundred thousand dollar house pays about two hundred fifty-six thousand or two hundred fifty-six hundred dollars annually per thousand. That'd be inequitable, wouldn't it? Um, we also offset those by user and program fees. So park rentals, shelter rentals, ball field rentals, registrations for basketball camps, volleyball camps, things like that offset the cost of these uh services, help pay for staffing, equipment materials, maintenance supplies, things like that. Uh, our twenty twenty-two budget uh has adopted um by council is just about six hundred thousand dollars um as um anticipated SMPD revenue. So five ninety-eight, seven seventeen is what our anticipated revenue from the Shelton Metropolitan Park District would be in twenty twenty-two. Our anticipated operating expense expenses is seven seventy-six, just over that. Um, we anticipate a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in a in capital expenses. Um, bought a pickup truck, a mower, I dedicated some funds to uh the development of North Cliff Neighborhood Park amongst some other things. That's a nine hundred and four thousand dollar total budget for twenty twenty-two utilizing three hundred and three thousand plus in in fund balance. So not a sustainable budget, right? Um, this is good short-term, long-term, doesn't doesn't quite pencil out. Um, four hundred eighty thousand dollars in anticipated in fund balance at the end of two two thousand twenty-two. Um, we need to hold back per city policy, the metropolitan parks follow city policy for um fund balance requirements, which so we need to have that hundred and twenty-four plus on the books for the sixteen percent uh fund balance.
That financial, sorry, Mark, that financial policy, does that is that falling in line with how we structured our enterprise funds? Is that thought general fund was higher?
General fund was set at twenty percent point, right? Uh, and all other funds are at sixty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now we're facing growths, right? We've got a number of um inquiries, annexation proposals coming to the city of Shelton. Um, a couple of ways we address growth within the city and how it meets our post uh requirements. Um, our list here, one is our subdivision ordinance and as it addresses parks and it's all of it's up there. I didn't paraphrase this. So compliance with city parks and recreation standards, subdivision shall be required to comply with current city parks and recreation standards and assessments. Pretty generic, uh, not specific, quite frustrating for a developer, quite frustrating for staff. Our tools that we have available to us now are our post plan and the five acre per thousand um park plan uh standard. Uh, so if we take a subdivision with a hundred lots, um, hundred houses, um, we use the US Census Bureau's average household at two point seven six. We can come up with the number of residents for that household, do a little math and equate that five acres per thousand, come up with one point three eight acres. So that would be that subdivision requirement to meet our five acre per thousand uh standard. Okay? You have one point three acres. What do you do with it, right? Do you build a swimming pool? Do you put in a play structure? Uh, is it open space? Is it a trail? Um, what are those requirements? So uh it becomes a bit of a negotiation, frankly. Um, and we haven't had to do this in really in my time here. Um, we haven't had to do this very often and I think it hasn't come to the forefront because we haven't faced a lot of this development pressure that we may be seeing in the future. So it's really timely that we can address this in the in the, you know, in the near future. Um, so what we do is we discuss, I'll I'll take, for example, a recent uh preliminary plat subdivision proposal. And so we we've been discussing the the need of the five acre per thousand and what a typical neighborhood park might look like. Uh, they'd love to just pay it uh impact fee, call it good. Um, but we don't have those in place, so they're going to propose a constructing a neighborhood park within the area of this of this subdivision. Um, we're we're talking about typical um neighborhood park amenities. So that is a pop, a small play structure, a grass field, somebody can kick a ball around, play around, throw a frisbee, whatever they want to do, some picnic tables, um, maybe a small sport court, half-court basketball, pickleball, something like that, a trail, some landscaping, typical um short-term, you know, use park. It's not destination park, no parking, somebody's not going to drive there, they're within walking distance. It doesn't have a large play structure like Neyland Park, that's really destination, no large pavilion or amphitheater that would have community events. So this serves the, you know, the half-mile radius, the neighborhood adjacent to that park. Um, but again, we're, it's kind of, it's kind of a negotiation. It's kind of a back and forth. Um, what what's important to the city? What's the developer willing to do? How do we meet in the middle and try to move forward with a with a common common plan and common goals?
Question. When you see the neighborhood park can be private, what is that exactly?
So like there, there's nothing within, there's nothing within our standards that you have to dedicate the the parkland to the city or to the public. So um Shelton Springs is an example.
Yeah.
That that uh that subdivision has a park, it's maintained and operated by a homeowner association. It's not, it's not a city park, not necessarily open to the public. They could limit access to that facility without having some standards put in place at the at the time of plat.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, miss missed that.
No, that's good. Hey, then, yeah, I just, you covered it. I just, yeah, and it wasn't exactly sure if.
Yeah, um, that's, that's an example locally and it's the only example within the city limits locally that that um is specific to that. Um, obviously, it meets a need. We can't just miss that. Um, is it going to be maintained by the homeowners association, you know, to a standard the city might maintain it? Who knows? Is it going to uh provide for uh residents and city outside of that subdivision? We don't have any control over that. The city doesn't have any control of over that at that point. So um, there's, there's different ways to address that. Um, there can be, you know, they certainly can do a HOA managed operated park, but also dedicate community space, um, pay Lua fees, impact fees, some of those things that I'll kind of touch some bases here on as we go along. Okay? Um, this map shows some of the development we've been talking about and some of the um, some of the impacts we could see coming up in the future. Um, number one, large red square there is the Peacock Ridge Proposed Annexation. Um, three hundred acres, could be more, they're coming back um to us, potentially up to fifteen hundred residential units. Um, number two is uh proposed uh expansion of Christmas Village. We talked to the owners up there, uh, about uh maybe sixty residential units that might be added up there. Uh, we obviously have the Veterans Village, uh, number three on the on the list there, um, thirty residential units. Um, let's see, Bayview Terrace is four down the bottom right-hand corner. Uh, we recently received an application with preliminary plat there for, I think it's about two hundred and seventy residential units, includes townhouses and things like that through a planned unit development. So um, some more intensive, um, uh, more more dense development that we've been talking about in the neighborhood residential code as well. So um, as more dense development occurs, that can create greater impacts on our parks and our public facilities, right? Because there are smaller yards, uh, more intensive, you know, populations in those areas. Um, North Cliff Commons, the forty-two residential units off off North Cliff Road, um, that uh has received a planned unit development at uh permit and we're waiting on construction documents. Uh, the Coffee Creek Residential Development I talked about, which could be up to two hundred and seventy-one residential units. And then uh Grand View Heights is number seven. We've talked with these um proponents a couple of times over the last year or so, and um, they were actually waiting for some of those neighborhood residential um code amendments to take place to apply, uh, because they'll be taking advantage of of some of those changes. So um, we're seeing, um, I didn't, didn't add all these up, but we're seeing us as what could be a significant residential increase in our community and a significant impact to to our park system if um if we don't take some measures or are are really proactive in addressing some of those um issues upfront. And that leads us to funding sources. So there's, there's all kinds of mechanisms for funding municipal services, right? But there's, there's certain um funding mechanisms that would address maintenance and operations or capital improvements, right? And so some aren't available to parks facilities, some are specific to to other services the city might provide. So I'm trying to uh just address some of those throughout this presentation and I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll say first and foremost, I'm not an expert on municipal funding. So um, I'll leave that to Terry, but I'm glad she showed up and maybe back me up a little bit or certainly Jeff or anybody else that might want to, or we can get you um some answers down the road. But uh, this is the example at the top. If fifty houses are built per year at that, you know, if they're valued at two hundred, excuse me, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, it would generate two hundred fifty-six dollars a year per house, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. It doesn't build the two million dollar um Simpson multimodal trail or the one point four million dollar Able Point Trail anytime soon, right? These are, these are revenue streams that certainly help maintenance and operations, but they don't offset the capital improvements that are in our capital improvement pr- program in the post plan. So um, now, if they came in and built fifteen hundred residential units right off the bat, sure, but these are going to be phased, right? These are going to be over time. We'll see these down the road and we still have the current needs, you know, and then whatever needs these these um, this development, these developments, this this reg- the residential density will bring with them. Uh, they'll certainly have their own um wants and desires for our community. Um, so there's council and or park board approved um funding sources. So the park board has the ability to to issue bonds, um, pass a levy lid lift, um, much like the council can. So we're, we're kind of, we're kind of blending, I think, the two entities here a little bit in this discussion. And then there's voter-approved uh funding mechanisms. Um, so council, uh, park board approved, you have councilmatic bonds, um, potential impact fees, uh, real estate excise taxes, uh, and obviously uh general fund, um, supplementing parks and recreation services, which it it does look to a limited extent now, uh, some of the ca- skate park services are um are funded through the general fund. Um, but essentially, everything else is funded to the Metropolitan Park District and it's been divorced essentially entirely from the city's general fund.
Does the SMPD have a expiration date like the TBD?
Does not. Uh, there's voter-approved uh mechanisms like general obligation bonds, those cover capital um projects. Uh, sales tax increase could address maintenance and operation um services and then the regular property tax lid lift. Um, SMPD, SMPD by law can leviate to seventy-five cents per thousand. I'll start with sales tax. Current sales tax in the city is eight point eight percent. Uh, state collects six point five, county four tents, city one point three and transit point six. Um, on the right-hand side, I listed restricted sales taxes that can be passed and obligated for a lot of different things, from mental health and cultural access, cultural facilities, um, transportation, zoos and aquariums and things like that, but none of them really apply here. I thought it was just interesting how many there were out there that that could be applied for uh other municipal services. Um, the the city has a maximum unrestricted one percent sales tax, so that could be spent on municipal services in any way. Um, half of that is um is split between then eighty-five percent, uh, fifteen percent between county and the city if it's collected here and then um half, half the percent is unrestricted and collected by the city. So uh, the levy lid lift, again, um, as you know, statutorily, the Metropolitan Park District can increase its levy by one percent annually without going to a vote of the public if it can show substantial need, right? Right term? Thank you. Um, and so as I mentioned, seventy-five cents per thousand is the um maximum statutory limit. So there's eleven cents essentially available there. Uh, it's a simple majority vote. Uh, it could be a single-year, one-year lift, um, used as a base for then subsequent years. So if you lifted it, you know, three percent in twenty twenty-five, uh, or three cents per thousand in twenty twenty-five, that would be the standard for the one percent annual substantial increase. It wouldn't go back to what it is, you know, the previous year. Um, there's temporary, you voted in, it's, 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 it's got a term limit, right? You you increase it for this period of time to serve these services, do these projects, whatever that might be, then it ends, or there's a multi-year and it can be increased up to six years. MRC is a great resource, by the way. I'm quite great information here. Uh, bonds um for capital improvements only, so they can pay for maintenance and operations, um, land acquisition, park development, uh, transportation projects, things like that. Uh, so we've got general obligation bonds, um, based on um councilmatic bonds, um, can be passed by the council without a vote of the people, but you have to pay for that out of existing revenue, right? So you, and that comes first. So if councilmatic bonds are passed and you've got a levy rate of whatever it is, hundred thousand dollars a year, that gets paid first, right? And then you're paying for public services like police and fire and streets and parks and everything else. So you're dedicating that debt service over the term of that. So it's, it's, it's obviously a commitment and a commitment that's hard to predict, you know, where we're going to be in the future. Um, unlimited tax, general obligation bonds, those are voter-approved, six percent approval, and then that that institutes a a funding mechanism to help pay off the debt service on that. Uh, revenue bonds uh through user fees, they can be pa- they can be passed, issued, um, but there's a user fee attached that pay off the debt service. Um, most, most time that's like a arena maybe or a public facility that's going to, you know, that's going to generate a lot of user fees, they'll pay that off. So impact fees. Um, one-time charges against new development. Um, they pay for new or expanded public facilities directly addressing the increased demand. So again, our capital improvement program, if we have a need for a neighborhood park in an area of town that um is not being addressed, especially through this new development, those funds can be paid to or used to provide those services. Um, open space, parks, recreation facilities are all on the table for that type of funding. Most of the time, it's imposed on residential development. Um, there's different mechanisms throughout different municipalities, uh, and different fees fee structures. Um, it's across the board. Sometimes um there, there's, there's certainly is reductions for multifamily development, um, affordable housing, if it's deed restricted. Um, some cities have mechanisms there where uh they will lower that that uh impact fee if it's if it's deed restricted, affordable housing. Um, commercial industrial development's a little less common, but sometimes uh they'll have an impact fee that is, you know, is lower extent because uh the folks in a large commercial development, um, will, you know, recreate somewhere for their lunchtime or there's, you know, it draws people to the community and we want to, we want to serve um whatever services um that they might require as well. So depending on what kind of development. And the charges are developed through calculations with CIP that it's that's adopted annually. So we have a five-year, we have a nine million dollar CIP. Um, that's how the charges are developed essentially to start with. You, how much money do you need to complete your CIP? How many, how, what kind of development are you looking at in the in the future, um, in the in the lifespan uh timeframe available um to spend those funds and uh and come up with a way to develop that that fee rate um with, you know, some skin in the game by the SMPD, the city or whoever else might be appropriately involved with that as well. Reet, real estate excise tax. So there's two reets in the city of Shelton. Um, point oh, what is it? Quarter of one percent. Um, one of them is currently used to pay off debt service on the um fire station. That was um, that we have um a loan out on. Uh, the other, I believe it's REET two is collected and it's and it's, it's been used in various places throughout the city, but uh traditionally, I I think a lot of the, um, it's been used for road projects, um, typically the city of Shelton. So um, they're both collected by the city now. Um, you'll see in twenty twenty-one about a hundred ninety-four thousand per each uh were collected for um both of those funds. That takes us to some recommendations from the advisory committee. So again, I think we've spent at least two meetings, maybe, you know, partial meeting as well, talking about this and what what um, what the recommendation to the to the council would be, to the park board would be from from the advisory committee. And it and it really came up with kind of three tiers. Um, one recommendation is refining our uh Shelton Municipal Code nineteen point two seven, the subdivision ordinance, um, bringing about standards that um meet the city's goals and objectives and build livable, right, neighborhoods and communities that everybody can, you know, recreate in, um, enjoy, you know, some of the passive and active recreation close to home. Um, and really provide the services that that people are looking for in an urban environment, right? Um, and impact fee study. Um, these are typically done by a third-party service. Um, you're familiar with FCS group that's done uh the um, they've done water and sewer rates for us as well as the ER and R program. Um, they develop models for communities. There's other, I'm not certainly not endorsing anybody, but there's other agencies out there that that perform those kind of types of functions, develop, develop a model uh moving forward for impact fees based on the council's goals, right? And then additional funding sources for maintenance and operations. Where that is, the advisory committee didn't have a specific recommendation, but uh as our Uh as our, you know, two twenty twenty two budget um. Showed you, um it's not sustainable. Um so at some point, um we are in. Going into twenty twenty three, ratcheting back on uh some of the projects, some of the capital improvements, so we can maintain that fund balance. And we can maintain our maintenance and operations in our existing facilities. Doesn't make sense to build new facilities if you can't maintain them, right? So uh we need to maintain what we have first and foremost, uh but with an eye on looking at how we can provide the services that the community wants. Now and moving into the future. And that sums up my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um how did they land on impact beats or why did the or choose impact beats?
The the it 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 most most specifically addresses growth pain for growth, right? It's 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 the direct, it's the direct impact that that new house, those new residents. And the impact they have on our facilities and the increased demand in our in our in our park system can be addressed at that point.
And to increase the draw to subsequently create an impact fee, uh we. Need good parks and the recreational space, so people wanna develop and build here, right?
So. Yeah, you you look at it two ways, right? We we talk about affordable housing a lot, um but we also talk about amenities in this community and why people wanna come here. And we talk about the communities that we'd like to live in or we'd like to visit and the amenities they have, um whether it's working, you know. Active waterfronts or um whatever it is, soccer fields, baseball fields, waterfront trails and things like that. Yeah, they they're they're not, those aren't constructed um primarily through general fund revenues. Looked at a lot of cities, there are some cities locally, you know, Lacey and Chehalis don't have impact fees. Um Lacey has a different, you know, funding mechanism, they have a large commercial um development uh in their city. They they generate sales tax um. Much much more, you know, than than the city of Shelton does, right? Um we're we're, I think, if I'm speaking correctly, we're, you know, we're, we rely on property sales tax pretty evenly. To fund our our general services, um but there's other communities that have, Tuck Willa is a great example. I mean, it is. It is all commercial essentially and industrial properties, there's for the for the budget they have, they have few residents. Um they have got some great recreation centers of, you know, community pools and things like that that they're able to fund um through. That funding mechanism they have there, that isn't, you know, at this time available to us.
On the updating the nineteen point two seven, are we looking at maybe developers building their own parks? Or impact fees? Is it?
I I think it can be a mix, yeah. I think um we've looked at, I looked, I looked at some models whereas it's um. It it can be a mix, it can be, it can be both, it could be one or the other, right? I think we have to look at what models might work, what what are development community, you know?
I think it'd be nice if they built them and dedicated them to the city because obviously we don't want them building a park that doesn't get mowed. You you know, and uh I think that our potential growth of fifteen hundred homes in the future is gonna help with additional funding sources. I mean, I'd be comfortable with looking at looking at the impact fees and a REIT. Um also, I don't know if we need to look at additional funding sources for maintenance yet, because I think that the growth is going to. Help out a lot with that, right? But I mean, as for impact and updating nineteen point two seven, I think that's a great idea.
Mark, could you talk a little bit about uh if developers purchased? Or if developers constructed a park that they would then get impact fee credits which they would use to.
Certainly.
Construct.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, exactly, yeah. The so you can ob you can obviously offset the. Uh the mechanism is to offset the impact fees by constructing the park, right?
Yeah.
And so that's that's credited back to back to the developer to use as they wish.
So the option, which the option would be there.
Could be, yeah, there's in there's in lieu of fees as well. Um I looked at a mechanism in a. Uh a city close to us where they actually had a percentage of the development, but you had a hundred acres, you might set aside ten percent of that property. And and fifty percent of that would be active recreation, fifty percent would be passive recreation, so open space or trails. And then they had a menu, much like we do with the uh uh design standards for neighborhood residential, you know, you had architectural features, you had design features. You had a menu and you picked a play structure of so many square feet or a half-court basketball court or uh, you know. Whatever, pick the tables, you know, you kind of had a menu you could choose from, so the developer could kind of pick and choose what they wanna do as well. Um this city had an impact fee uh as well, uh on top of that, to address some of the greater community needs, you know? The the Neeland parks, the ball fields, the waterfront access and things like that down the road that are that are not community facilities. And not just servicing that neighborhood.
Or future water park? Or water pad, is it a water pad?
Spray pad, yeah, splash pads, spray pad, absolutely, yeah.
Uh one and on the west side Olympia is pretty nice.
It'd be great today, wouldn't it?
It would be great today, it would probably have a few people down there.
It would have a few people there, wouldn't it?
If you're ever out that way.
Yeah.
That that's, I believe, public, probably on spree.
Well, and it really would be um the builders that's interested to have a place. In your community that you're building, that people want to live by, and that's gonna sell those houses even faster. So.
And on on that, so the design standards in the neighborhood parks, I would be interested in seeing what that looks like. Because, yeah, again, if I think you're kind of alluding to that, you know, oh, we made a park, it's a twenty by twenty uh. Bunch of Scotland or whatever, you know, it'll be dedicated as park space. Um I want a little bit more teeth, but also, you know, not. Being overbearing about.
Yeah, yeah, I.
What the play place needs. Well, I think all parks need to have benches and a one play toy or something. I mean, you know, obviously it's not a park if you go sit on the grass.
Well, I do like the idea of how what the house is, the different check boxes, you know, okay, so you have this much space. Do this much, you know what I mean? I I do like that. Here's some options, you know?
Yeah, yeah, the the menu, if you will.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we've seen. It it there's there's different ways to do it, right? And it's what meets your community, um what what your existing residents want. Uh the developers that we're talking to, uh again, right now, how much is your impact fee? We'll pay it. And now they're willing to, they're doing that in other communities. Um right now, the Coffee Creek subdivision uh had negotiate. Because they have this, we have very similar language in nineteen twenty seven, the subdivision ordinance for schools. You have to address impacts for schools. Well, guess what they do? They go over to the school district, they negotiate an impact fee per house, they send us a letter. Um signed off by both entities and then it's negotiated amongst amongst those parties and they're happy to do it because. Good schools are gonna help sell that subdivision, right? Um it's kind of the same thing, but it's 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 a bit ambiguous, it takes time. Time is money to those people. If they knew what the requirements are gonna be upfront, they're doing their due diligence. They're doing their discovery on a on a subdivision, they know it's going to be X number of acres. These facilities or this impact fee or this in lieu of fee and they can and they can move forward with their due diligence and decide how they wanna move forward to that point. Rather than coming to staff and trying to trying to, you know, trying to make it work for everybody in a in a little bit. I won't say in a vacuum, but you know, we're doing it at a staff level rather than having a council adopt an ordinance that. That is clear and concise and and available to everybody.
The only.
Theoretically, and if twelve percent, we just want an open space trail all around the perimeter of our development. And that meant the amount of acreage, that would be something that could be possible, like a multimodal trail.
Technically, we don't have a standard, it's not, right? Exactly, yeah, that's that's, yeah, so if if we got in a, if we got to the point where, you know. We're in a disagreement, we don't have a code to point to and say, no, you have to have a children's play structure here for these two hundred and fifty houses. We don't have that within our code, yeah.
So if we had a code that was just simple and direct, would probably encourage people to put more bids out. Or. Potential.
I I think it's gonna be, I I think in my experience, I think it's gonna be appreciated. Jeff has a lot of years under his belt.
Nothing.
And 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 working with developers too, and I think he can, he can expand upon that too, but I think it could be appreciated. Knowing what the standards are, knowing what your requirements are gonna be, whether it's building code or. Or or your park standards or your street standards or anything else, they they know that upfront, it's much easier path forward to that development.
So this is something, this is a specific example of something that we've been talking about for uh several years now is. Um the ambiguity uh scares people off.
Predictability of process.
Predictability of process and the negotiation piece uh for whether it's with the school district. Or with our uh city team on parks projects, that. It it makes, in my experience, developers a little bit hesitant. Uh and it also makes our team uncomfortable, because we want to provide what's best for the city, but then there's this back and forth and extends timelines and. As long as the fees overall, and you've all heard me say this, but as long as the fees overall aren't just outrageous. Most of the larger developers, whether they're regional or national, uh they plug the numbers in. They understand, they plug their numbers into their formula, they understand uh how much profit they need per lot, and as long as it pencils out, they don't care.
They design around it, they design with it, yeah. Yeah, like a development like Peacock Bridge would probably need more than one park, I would assume.
Most likely, yeah.
It's pretty big, a lot of property get there, probably three parks.
The one thing I didn't mention too is is a lot of communities have infill, right? Standards where it might not apply to single lot infills or certain amount of uh uh infill and things like that to encourage that infill. And where there might already be some amenities and facilities or it's reduced rates or things like that, so there's there's mechanisms to to address, you know. The the range of development that we might see.
We definitely need park standards because we don't want, I I don't think that developed, built a trail around the property like he's he made the. For that assumption, I think that if we want parks, we want parks. We we can handle the trails, the city can, we need trails.
Yeah, when there's interconnectivity too, so when you're looking at uh developing. Uh a subdivision itself, you wanna say, you know, put a trail through and it needs to end here on one side of your property and needs to start on one side of your property. So the trails from the adjacent properties can connect up. What you do in between is up to you, as long as you provide the trail access, right?
And we've talked about, we've talked about subdivisions with lo maybe less longer than typical block lengths. And so we talked about connectivity between those, you know, we want pedestrian connectivity, whether it's topography or anything else that that. Might create the need to create these longer blocks, we want some pedestrian connectivity between those. We want access for our for our residents not to walk all the way around, you know, a a longer necessary block and and get people moving. Get people out on the sidewalks, that's gonna create people driving more, right? And and not have that connection within their communities and knowing their neighbors and utilizing the amenities. So the these are things that we're talking about now with some of the subdivision applications that we're seeing.
So two things, with park impact fees, if a developer were to choose that they would pay the park impact fee. Does the entire amount of that fee have to be dedicated to a park on that property or could that be portioned out that? X amount is paid out to meet the standards and then X goes into, you know, the parks fund for other more general community projects. Um so I guess that's one kind of, how does that logistically work? And the second question I had is. How does the opportunity for public-private partnerships play into some of these funding models? Like are there opportunities for the Parks District to partner with the yacht club or if there are new? Other um community. Community organizations that are looking to um expand their space and create amenities. How can we meet them so that those dollars are going further, not only in development, but in ensuring that we have some longevity on the maintenance and and.
Yeah.
The quality that we're looking for on those types of projects and is that something we we've even had a chance to look at?
Yeah, a- actually, yeah, we were um I'll go to number two first. Yeah, we 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 were we were speaking with with Shell Marina and Shell Yacht Club extensively, um just. Six, eight months ago about some opportunities down there, um specifically applying for some R C O grants. Um cooperatively and to provide more public access. Um they weren't quite ready at that time, so that kind of pulled back a little bit. We're we're certainly open to that. Um I think that leads to, yeah, those opportunities with any of our community partners. It don't have to be a public entity, you know, it can be a public-private partnership. Um typically, it's been done in the construction, you know, phase. Whether it's the clock tower or Neeland Park or the skate park or things like that, but um that doesn't mean it can't be. Uh co-ownership or co-management of a of a community facility, yeah. Question one is, the city of Shelton's one service area, much like our um our T I F, our traffic impact fees. So it it can be expanded within, you know, within that service area, any impact fees, but certainly if if. Can impact be instituted for um for residential development subdivision and we didn't have some specific requirements for parkland there. That's where it needs to be addressed, right? Because all all of a sudden, we we have. We have created less service, you know, to our community in there by by increasing, you know, particularly if it's in the south side of town, north slip. Something like that, um we already have a need for recreational facilities, if we have a development there and don't require. Um that park space or that park to be built, um we're just extending the problem down the road, exacerbating the problem, so yeah.
Could we get a evaluation of how much money we could raise if we lifted the valuation from sixty four cents to seventy five cents? Eleven cents per thousand, right? I mean, that was, but that's only for capital expenses, is that correct?
No, that would be, that would be, that would be a general, general levy, yeah, that could be spent on either.
That's very flexible if we raise it to um the maximum, and it's seventy five cents maximum.
Seventy five cents is the maximum per thousand, correct. Um as you, you might not remember, I lived it. Um what was it, thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen? We went through pro rationing in the Metropolitan Park District when we were going through the recession, so there is a, there is a maximum. By R C W of general tax levy on any one property, I think it's five dollars ninety cents per thousand. You're taking bonds and levies and stuff away from that. Well, there's senior taxing districts like the county and the city and the hospital. And then there's junior taxing districts like the Shell Metropolitan Park District. Well, when property values go down. A lot of times those, you know, those entities still collect the amount they need to provide those services, right? But the price per thousand, the collection per thousand goes up at that point, well. As it goes up, some of those junior taxing districts start moving down the list, so we were pro ration, we were. Um we were down, I think, thirty percent in general uh over about four years. And so that's really where we're catching up now, we're looking, we're we're buying three vehicles in two years. Because we're on nineteen ninety six, nineteen ninety seven hand-me-downs from police and public works. Uh we we just purchased another mower this year, so we're doing some catch-up from from those years of not being able to um not. You know, not collecting the revenue that we anticipated and really building a little bit of bank. We have a healthy fund balance. Um and that's that's on purpose, you know, it's to address those needs. It's not enough for a fifty percent. Recreation and conservation office patch grant, as as they all are, they're all. Land and water conservation funds and some other things, but but local park programs are fifty percent match, so. If we wanted to go build a community park or a the Eagle Point Trail or something like that, you know, we still need five, six hundred thousand dollars of capital. Funds to offset the grant, um and we don't have that fund balance uh in the bank right now to do that.
Thing with impact fees too is it's it's great when there's development.
Right.
So when there's no development and like your your earlier slides were kind of demonstrating, you know, it's not a sustainable budget. So assuming zero happens, which I think we've had years where it was close to that, um or one kind of thing, but. Um that would be my only real concern with um with taking the impact fee approach. But uh yeah, and then that, you brought, thank you for bringing to light the junior taxing di- district challenges too, so that's, you know, you put those two things together. And we could have like park blight, you know, when we end up, you know, and down downturns, but um. Yeah, I I just wanted for comment, uh I just wanted to make, you know, I I'm incredibly supportive, I'm a huge fan of the Pro's plan. I think that was very well done and um I wanna make sure though that our revenues are taking care of what we have today. Um very well, um there's, you know, definitely some things that I think we could be. Um you know, working towards uh from from a level of service standard, you know, perspective, but. Uh it's about some of the neighborhood parks that are city parks, you know, those things could use a little bit of attention from time to time. But the other piece of that, and I'll be honest, uh usage. I mean, are we collecting any, are we really kind of collecting any data on how much our parks are being used right now?
Yeah.
Other than, you know, maybe Neeland Park and Callanad, I'm pretty sure the rest are infrequently used and if not. You know, that's somebody sleeping in there or whatever, you know, so.
Yeah, the the only data we'd have is rentals, you know, specifically rentals of of those facilities and that's Neeland, Callanad, Loop Field that we. That we manage rentals on, um and those. Um, and those those take the bulk of our of our maintenance activity and budgets, to be to be honest. Um, you're closer to the urban core, uh you know, we have, we have, you know, we have some demographics. And some uses that that create uh, you know, impacts that we have, we address on a regular basis. Yep, if you have a public restroom, it it's it's expensive to maintain, right? Expensive to maintain and manage. There's there's certain uses in there that that, you know, just. Create that 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 activity and that, you know, that we have to be there and we have to respond to, and that's why we have that weekend shift. Um, year-round, so because we wanna provide those amenities, we wanna provide those 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 uh services to our community, but they take, they take the the priority.
Yeah, and when we're talking about design and standards too, I just wanna make sure we call attention, we we do have an aging population um nationally and locally. Um, so when we are designing parks, and we talked a lot about play structures, uh I'm sure sixty-five and overcrowded, like here, let's stop play structure. So just making sure that when we're designing and we are looking at the demographics for the community. I know, I know we're very family-oriented and focused on that, you know, sense of place for families and residences and stuff like that. But I think it's uh holistically looking at that, I think there's advantages to that. And you're talking about potential expansion of like Christmas Village, for example, and.
You wouldn't want a play structure there, right?
Yeah, a play structure, right? Yeah, that play structure per se, but but uh, you know, an active community, you know, the public health does better. And, you know, there's a lot of demo- uh demonstrable characteristics of uh how parks help communities. And uh somebody brought up connecting parks or connecting the community that way. That's interesting. I like to kind of think about that a little bit more. Um, I'm not sure how feasible exactly that would be, but I think over time, you know, that's definitely um definitely a. A thought that I'd like to explore a little bit more is how we kind of connect all of these together somehow. So it could be walked, so somebody essentially could walk out of their neighborhood and connect themselves to the system.
It's it's a high-level goal within the growth plan in the trails element. Certainly, it's talked about connecting amenities throughout the community. Where where there's where there's um, you know, not not available public infrastructure like sidewalks or or pedestrian paths. How we can provide trails to fill in some of those gaps. And as as you've seen, trails are a top priority, whether it's nature trails, hiking trails, biking trails. Those have been a top priority for years, and I think you speak to our demographics and the ability to get out and move and and and. Traverse the community um and see something different um not in a car. I think that's that's priority for our community.
The the, I know, sorry, one last, I don't mean to monopolize, but uh one last thing I did notice, you know, there was a. Uh I don't know if there's a reference in your presentation, but um, you know, transfers from the general, the city's general fund to parks. Uh once we met our obligation and fund balances and things like that, I'm I'm not too keen on that at the moment, just because I know um. We are only course correcting our general fund, we are in, you know, we don't, we don't have a sustainable general fund. And so I don't wanna necessarily be pulling from that resource to another unsustainable general fund, if that makes any sense. So um I wouldn't be too keen on um what Detroit say, sweep sweep the general fund budget to to fund our parks thing. I'd be a little hesitant on that, but uh interested in the impact fees and. The lid lift. Oh, is the lid lift council manic or is that a vote?
It's a vote.
It would be, okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
That's that the eleven cents?
Yeah, correct. I thought that was something else.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
And uh. On the additional funding sources, like I said, I wasn't, wouldn't be too excited about a sales tax, but what are we getting enough rental for baseball fields? And uh picnic areas and stuff when we're doing that? I mean, to help off.
You know, that that's a, that's a slippery slope, exactly right. You know, our 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 athletic facilities aren't maxed out right now. We're not seeing the use where they're they're not available. Um, if we, if we raise it two dollars an hour, you know, from from our ball. Let's see, our picnic shelter to twelve fifty an hour at two hour minimum, if we raise that to fifteen dollars an hour, it's a drop in the bucket, right? You know, but if you raise it ten or fifteen dollars an hour, it might be an impact to the user. Is there a benefit to the community and the city at that point uh for the services? Uh, we generate somewhere um around thirty thousand dollars a year. It's obviously our dad the last few years is it was poor. Um, but um that'll that'll be down again this year because we're not seeing uh the athletic field use that we've seen in the past. Especially from the youth community, I think their their numbers are down, so they're using MCRA primarily. We're seeing some practice um activity and things like that. But the 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 intensive use, especially up at Callanand, uh park for the baseball field is down this year. So um, you know, to to make it, to to increase the the um the user fees to a. To a point that they make a significant impact may may reduce, you know, the ability to use them for certain populations.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up is because I was on the President ROTC Booster Club and um, you know, they'd had the their ball here every year. And it was very reasonable and I pushed it for here, but for some reason, some of the other members wanted to do it somewhere different. And it was, it was eighteen hundred dollars, where it would have been like four hundred dollars here. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, recouping and and being competitive. I know this is a tax. Payers paid building, you know, so but, you know, the rates were way out. I mean, they're they were way off. For the same service, for the same five to eleven P M or five to ten P M, I think it was.
Uh there's, there's been, um, I think, different philosophies over the years and my years here, truly. And particularly with, you know, with this building and the public use space on on. If how accessible we want to make as far as fee fees go and how much you wanna subsidize the use and community. And and same thing with parks too, you know, where where's the line to to draw to that you're gonna impact the use at any one point? And then you have a facility that's not being used at all, or it's not gen- generating any revenue. And that's, that's, you know, that's a tough um um. Tough place to be, you know, or or tough area to to kind of refine and 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 winnow down to. But um we certainly can, we certainly can do our best to bring you some more data on those.
Here, I have a couple more, if I can, um, you know, as we're talking about making sure we're supporting the demographics we have here as well. Is there uh an additional cost if we look at adding, I guess, inclusive models in some of these park spaces? For folks who have certain disabilities and or does that offer up maybe some grant opportunities? I know we've talked a little bit about um some of the the Quonis Legacy Play and some of those things. So um are there perhaps ways that we could try to lean on some of those resources? To create some more inclusive models at some of these either existing facilities or as we're looking into the future? Um, and and is there, uh, you know, I know there's no magic list following those funding sources, but is that something that we could consider? And while I know that having. Our residents work on city properties get sticky because of a whole host of things um. You know, are there opportunities that maybe not a huge impact to the budget, but in terms of pride of place and having like. You know, community neighborhood workdays, adopt a park that like once a year or once a quarter, folks are getting out in their own areas. Um, cause I think people take care of things more when I I help paint that, what you do, you know? So I I know from a funding standpoint, it may not make a huge difference, but I think from a community buy-in and a um. Main maintaining what we have, I think there's some opportunities there. And we do have a lot of people in this community that love our park spaces and love their neighborhoods, then it might be a way for them to engage in a different way.
Yeah, yeah, we have adopted park program in place, not active. Um, we can do better on that, certainly, um but pride and ownership, right? These are public facilities, uh we want to encourage pride and ownership. We're working with the neighborhood uh uh North Cliff neighborhood right now. In in developing that empty park that's been there since nineteen seventy-eight, you know, a patch of land that people think is. You know, an un- undeveloped residential lot somebody owns, but we're working with that neighborhood to develop some amenities that meets their needs. But also working with them to develop that pride of ownership, right? We want people to, you know, take pride in that, they use it. We're not dictating what's gonna go in there. That community is gonna give us the feedback and we're gonna work together um to make sure that um they're managing it, you know, and managing it by by using it. Proper ways that that drives out some of the negative uses in these facilities. We've seen that with uh Callanand Park over the years um and other facilities where um we bring in more positive use. It tends to, you know, move out some of the negative, so absolutely. RCO requires you to meet um. Accessibility standards with any of their grant programs. I'm not aware of anything specific to upgrade a facility, but.
And I think what I'm looking at is beyond standard ADA, but if there are opportunities for um folks within our community who do have physical disabilities. That can't maybe use a traditional play structure, are we considering other um other options as we're adding or rejigging some of these?
Absolutely.
Doesn't Callahan have some ADA swings, correct?
Correct, yeah, as ADA swing, it's um the, you know, the technically the, it's got a ramp. And then the the woodchips, technically the woodchips can meet eighty ADA, it's not the highest level. Um, poured in place rubber surfaces, again, you're talking a lot more money, so.
Thurston County has volunteers for their parks and they don't give them easy jobs sometimes. I have a friend that's a volunteer and he uh he's like taking out hills and everything else.
We'd love to just have some seasonals that will pay.
Yeah.
Right? Cause we have, we have openings for seasonal um positions within our parks and uh and and we have funding available to help us maintain those facilities. If uh if they're willing to come, come work for us.
I'll send you an eighteen-year-old. All right.
Lot of good information, thank you.
Absolutely, um i- if you, if you're done, but if I may, uh I'd like to kind of summarize where I'm hearing. I heard some interest in in bringing some language back on nineteen twenty-seven, our subdivision ordinance, on how how we can better. Um, address the the park fees in in subdivisions, correct? Um, and then I also heard maybe not consistently about some more information on on impact fees. Is that, okay, is it to the level of of going out and doing a study? Or do you want some more information beforehand, maybe with comparables? Okay, what else? Any anything else that you'd like to see specifically that we can put together for you?
Was there a request to look at the total dollar value of the.
Yeah.
I actually, if I could, sorry, I'm singing back Council, Councilmember Peterson's, her point about uh percentage breakdowns of the impact fee. I I kind of like that thought too, um. Yeah, once our CIP is covered, cause I mean, essentially the impact fee should cover O N M and it should be covering capital improvements and then, you know.
It ha- it has to, it has to cover system development.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it'd be interesting to see like once uh, you know, sort of new development, it's so much percent. And then of that total percent, like one percent goes back to the system O N M or something like that.
I didn't bring unfortunately my looking ahead tonight, but one of the things that we're adding to the list is. Uh, we're gonna talk about permit process, so all of you understand from start to finish. Where a permit starts, what a permit, a generic permit needs, and then how you get to the finish line. And you understand some of those pieces and parts like uh Mark was mentioning, the negotiation piece, trying to get that out of there. Because that only extends time, right? And it's ambiguous. The other thing I wanna talk about is go a little bit more in-depth at a different study session, and this is Terry's first time hearing it. So let me know if I just go like this, but uh wanna talk about municipal finance. And where the, where the uh taxes come from, uh what they go to, um. How much of a percentage of certain revenue streams we spend on what? And where, I think, uh it was mentioned earlier, we're in kind of a course correction on the general fund, we have been for the last three years. We're on a really good path, but we're not there yet. But so all of you understand where we are today, where we want to be five years from now. Uh, and the next part is uh things like the subdivision parks, um, you know, how do we get those parks uh in place? Do we offer incentives if uh there's an undeveloped piece of ground over here that's a an acre or more? And this piece is developing, if you put a park right on the edge, so the next development can combine with it and create a better, greater park, do you get an incentive for that? Things like that, um that we're looking at, but coming back and making sure that we all know what the impact fees are. How we stack up total.
Yeah.
With other people, other communities in Western Washington. Um, you know, and going back to the fact that it's for regional and the national developers. The total amount of impact fees and building permit costs don't really factor into their decision. It's timelines.
I feel like the idea of parks uh or developers building the parks because they can build them much cheaper than we can.
Yeah.
They're already moved, yeah, as long as they build them to our standard.
Yes.
And that's what nineteen point two seven will do, as long as they go to our standards. And I like the idea of dedicating back to us, so we don't have parks that aren't maintained as well, but.
Or private and people are kept from you using them, kind of thing. That's, that is an interesting one. I'd like the, when we get to that part of the chapter, I'd like to think about that a little bit too.
Well, I think it's important as we talk about impact fees, well, fees in general with development. Yes, the national and the regional folks probably are just like, get get it done fast, I'm gonna, but I guess the question is, and I don't have the answer to that, is. What does that look like for a local developer if we adjust a smaller amount or we're getting more development, smaller development consistently? Instead of waiting for these big projects that are gonna put in, start at fifty homes, up to three hundred homes. Where is that tipping point that it it's comfortable enough that we're driving local growth, supporting our our neighbors and builders? And and getting some of these info lots and other things moving as well. So that's something I'm just kind of keeping in the back of my mind as as we're looking at these numbers.
And that Mark mentioned earlier uh a little bit is uh the info lots, uh giving them a break on things like sewer impact fees. Cause sewer line's already there, right? Uh, the trick is, and you'll get to do this uh in the not-too-distant future, is defining what infill is. That's what it comes down to.
I thought infill was a a lot that already had water and sewer at one time, the house burned down or something.
Yeah.
So that's what I.
There, different communities have different definitions based on uh different policy um desires.
And that's used just specifically for um GFCs for sewer water. That's that, that doesn't go beyond to any, you know, traffic impact fees or 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 any other building permit fees or anything like that. Fringe improvements, yeah, that is used narrowly just for the, just for the utility GFCs, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to get some of those lots filled that have a house and vacant lot, that house and a vacant lot, you know?
You, earlier you you were talking about some of the res- the residential PDs that are submitting or kicking the tires on it. I mean, I kind of just did the math on that, um, that's like five thousand people.
Mm-hmm.
So realistically speaking, those, what, one, two, three, four, four, five um developments? Uh, is that like a five to ten-year thing? Or is that a ten to twenty-year thing?
So uh.
Best guess.
Yeah, so I've been involved in a a couple, more than a couple fifteen hundred lot subdivisions, that's a twenty-year build.
That's a twenty-year build.
Yeah, the two hundred and fifty-two, I think, is the last number I saw for Coffee Creek.
Yeah.
That's probably a five-year build. Uh, maybe, you know, short end three, but that's really pushing.
Yeah, when we see four phases, I think, that is what they're proposing.
Yeah, and a lot of times developers will phase it, uh one, because they can't get the number of people in order to do all that stuff all at once. But two, because they need the uh the profits from the first phase to pay for the infrastructure of the second phase and on and on down the line.
That's a significant impact to me, I'm, yeah, that's.
The the one point I I think I wanted to address, uh Councilmember Schmidt, is um as well as an impact fee would offset capital. Costs that are now being paid for out of general revenue, right? So you can see a benefit to maintenance and operations, um because s- some of those, those general SMP collected funds. Are paid, you know, are paying for capital improvements, whereas you wouldn't have to do that if if there was a a dedicated capital improvement.
Right.
Fun source, so you would see some benefits in maintenance operations at that point. Uh, what that looks like right now, you know, we need to get some more numbers together for you.
And there's the two lines that kind of go like this.
Yeah.
Good discussion, thanks.
I think this is the longest study session we've had.
Now, or ten minutes.
Or not have me come back again.
Yeah, now it's, it's, yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah, we'll make sure you get the information that you asked for uh the next time we have this discussion. I'm not sure when yet, but Mark and I will talk about that tomorrow, bro.
And ma- maybe with a price for F P S group also with that next one, you're gonna do some.
I've got that.
You already got that, so is that thirty grand, pretty much?
Maybe closer to forty, yeah.
I give Mark some positive feedback for the speed at which it remediates a lot of the activities that have been going on as far as.
Yeah.
Um, you know, putting up spray painting and destruction. But whenever I move up there, that park somewhere, I think it's remediated right away and it doesn't give a chance for it to keep growing on itself. So I just wanna give you guys props in the Parks Department for remediating that right away.
I'll pass it on to our staff. I'll pass it on to our staff, they're, they're dedicated public servants, they care about the facilities they maintain and they take it quite personal. Um, so that's great, it's great. It's not the point where it's unhealthy, but i- it's good. But they take that personal and, and they want to provide, you know, the best for our community.
They're gonna do great at the movie park. They're messing with speakers.
Yeah, and we wanna follow the example that we're asking the private uh, private property to follow that we get it cleaned up at a certain timeframe.
Absolutely, yeah, that's great, thank you. All right, great, great discussion. Thank you, Mark. And Jeff, all right, does Council have any new items for discussion tonight, or did we have enough? I'm not hearing any, this uh, study should adjourn at seven, ten PM.